I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity for us to meet the candidates. Tonight we welcome candidates from the offices of Richland Township Trustees, St. Clairsville City Council, and the Mayor of St. Clairsville. My goals for this evening are to treat everyone fairly and to give each candidate a chance to inform the community about their candidacy in a reasonable amount of time. With these goals in mind, it is worth mentioning that each candidate was provided this evening's guidelines in advance to allow them proper preparation time. At this time, I would like to welcome the candidates for the office of Richland Township Trustees to the stage. And I also applaud with you, I commend all of the candidates for running for office. I think it's wonderful. There are four candidates running for one position. Two of the candidates are with us tonight, Thomas W. Costin and Todd Witchy. Unfortunately, two of the candidates cannot be here tonight. Gregory Clark is working and Carl Lehman has another obligation. We will begin tonight by providing each candidate with two minutes to inform the audience about themselves and why they are running for office. At two minutes, I will give a knock on the podium and the candidates will be stopped at 2:15. Speaking first tonight, it's Thomas W. Costin.
That's more applause than I've ever done. First of all, I'm supposed to speak about myself. I'm born in St. Clairsville, raised in St. Clairsville, graduated from St. Clairsville High School. Went to the military for three years in the United States Army right out of high school. I was stationed in West Germany for two and a half of those years. My unit was the 3rd Armored Cavalry Regiment and we guarded the East German Czech-Slovakian border. And it was a very interesting time. When I got out of service, I attended Elliott School Business in Wheeling and OU in Athens on the GI Hill. And after a couple of years of school, I decided I should go in business. And I leased a service station out around 149 Morris Town. I was there for 32 years. And during that time, I decided I would like to run for Township Trustee. I lived in Richland Township all my life. And I ran and I won. I was surprised. I took office January 1st of 1973. During the first term in office, we were approached, the trustees were approached by the county commissioners and the Cofaro Company. They were wanting to put a mall in Richland Township at that time. This was before the mall, obviously. And they talked to trustees, trying to get our support. And the trustees that were with me were Milton Porter and Jack Hand. Probably some of you knew them, but they passed away. But we all agreed to back the Cofaro Company and welcomed them to Richland Township. And they came and they started building. And once they started building, why... That was enough.
Okay. You can finish, Todd.
Once they started building, why... This is an interesting thing. They needed $1.5 million to complete Mall Road. And they asked the township for $500,000. Heck, our budget wasn't $200,000. And we couldn't have done it if they had to. But the county commissioners at that time had this plan down around the JDO and the Welfare, Park Office, but Department of Human Services. And at that time, they sold that part of either or enough coal for the coal industry. And they got $1.5 million out of it and they took care of the Mall Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costin. We now invite Todd Witchy to the podium. Just to let you to start, will you begin?
Okay. Thank you. My name is Todd Witchy. I'm a resident of St. Clairsville, always have been. 1980 graduate of St. Clairsville High School. Attended Belmont Tech, got an associate degree in business management. Attended this fine building for some credits. I went to Cincinnati College of Mortuary Science, graduated there. Got a bachelor's degree in mortuary science. And the new year will be my 35th year. Right out of high school, I joined the Navy. I did four years in the Navy. Served on the USS Proteus as AS-19 submarine tender out of Guam. And then the second two years on the USS New Jersey Battleship, BB-62. After that, like I said, I came back, went to school. I'm actually a member of the, I like to remember the VFW here in St. Clairsville. I'm the second vice commander of the American Legion here in St. Clairsville. And I also belong to Flushing Lodge. Having a brother Mason's here, I did it the old school way. I actually was asked by the candidate that holds this position to run for this position. Again, it must be my honesty that he's actually looking for in this position. So I was thrilled when he asked me to do this. I'm not a politician, but I said I would certainly do this for his benefit. My phone number, I'm going to give everyone my home phone number. It's going to be 695-6372. You can leave a message for me or toddwitchy@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Mr. Witchy. We are going to rotate speaker order. So you're first again. You were too quick for me.
Sorry about that.
So for this next part, each candidate will now be given 30 seconds to inform the audience about two or three of the top priorities on their agenda. Again, I'll knock at 30 seconds and you can complete your thought after that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, out in the township, I know roads are important to the folks on the far ends of the township. Again, the city and the county have a lot of the infrastructure, but my concerns are the far exteriors of the township. Once again, the infrastructure, the snow cleaning. One big issue here, the injection dump well in our township. That needs attention. Again, another issue of mine is something that I bring unique to applying for this is my knowledge of cemetery. In Richland Township now owns Belmont County Memorial Park, which is a 144 acre area that needs attention. I also want to see about getting a Golden Corral here in Belmont County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witchy and Mr. Costin. 30 seconds for your top two or three priorities.
Okay. First priority is to stop the injection wells that are going in down the road here. And the other thing is pave more township roads. Now, they've got a good start on it. They've done a good job. And the only reason I'm running is because one of them is not running. And they've done a good job on paving the roads and bringing them up. Upgrade the police department is one thing. We started the police department, my first trustee back in 1978. Our first chief was Frank Fable.
Mr. Costin, you're really nice to the office. I'd like to invite you to step back up. We're going to rotate orders so you'll go again. Okay. Each candidate will now be asked several questions by me. The audience was also invited to submit questions and we will use some of theirs as well. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the exact same question. And once again, you have 30 seconds. That'll be your personal time and you can continue to finish your thought up to 45 seconds. Here is the question. If elected Township trustee, what are your feelings about assisting and receiving assistance and resources from either the city or county in an effort to save money and be more effective with township resources and make the township dollar stretch even further?
I can answer that right now. I have no problem assisting the county or letting them assist the township. We've done it before, we can do it again. St. Clairsville and Richland Township have worked together for years. So have St. Clairsville and the county and Richland Township and the county. And I think you should work together to save taxpayers dollars. And other than that, I think I answered the question.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Witchy, the same question. If elected Township trustees, what are your feelings about assisting and receiving assistance and resources from either the city or county in an effort to save money and be more effective with township resources and make the township dollar stretch?
Well, that certainly, time's good. You have everything you want, as much resources I suppose as you possibly can. Again, I'm not an elected official. I've never been in this position before, so it's hard for me to answer that question. I kind of dive into things both legs and get my feet wet. So again, if elected, I certainly would dive into that and make the resources count wherever they may come from.
Thank you. We have a couple other questions. We'll continue to rotate to give each gentleman a chance to go first and second. So the next question is, as a Township trustee, how much of your time are you willing to dedicate to oversight and involvement on township projects, not including regular trustee meetings?
Well, that certainly is a very, very open question. Again, I've been in a lot of organizations where time is the essence of, you know, it's what you, the time factor you put into things. I will assure folks, they call me, get in touch with me, I will come to their house. I guess what I'm trying to see is, is it a city issue, is it a county issue, or is in fact a township issue? Again, you're elected to the township post and again, if it's an obligation of the trustees, then that's what it should be.
Thank you, sir. Same question. As a Township trustee, how much of your time are you willing to dedicate to oversight and involvement on township projects, not including regular trustee meetings?
I'm retired, I can go anytime. And I usually do. And I'm used to spending time when I was a trustee before, out on the roads and going around in different areas and seeing what was going on. And I've never been shy, I was spending time on anything to do with the township or anything I was involved in.
Thank you, sir. This question came from the audience, has to do with Hawksview Edition. It has been developed since around 2000 and they are wondering what your priority would be to get their road paved. They feel they pay a substantial amount of taxes and they're not getting the services, whether it's the roads or internet. Would that be a priority for your township? It says Hawksview Edition. Is that, was it that?
Yes. It's right over here.
It's part of the township.
Okay. Well, I know one subdivision that's got the same problem. And it's right out here on Hammond Road. And it's been in the township for probably 15 years now. A developer laid it out and sold the lots. And I'm not going to mention any names. And he sold the lots. He did not live up to his obligation as far as township goes. Township could not take the road over because the obligations weren't lived up to. And as a result, this subdivision is still, even though it's now in there for probably 15 years. And it's been paying taxes to Belmont County all those years, same taxes you and I pay. And they're not getting any services for it because it is not accepted by the county engineer and the township. Has to be accepted by the engineer first and then it goes to the township. He has to make sure all the subdivision rules and regulations are in order. And then he recommends the township take the road.
Thank you. Mr. Witchy, the same question. Has to do, this one specifically has to do with Hawksview Edition. It's been around since 2000. They need their roads paved and they're also concerned about the lack of internet service. What are your thoughts as a trustee?
Well, I definitely agree with it. Everybody wants good roads and some of them are chopped and chipped and such today. A good amount of money. I think that all the roads in the township should be paved. Again, for the internet, again, I don't know what the problem would be there at this day and age. It's hard to believe that anybody would be without high speed internet anymore. But again, it's something that definitely should be looked at. Regardless of the calls it would take to make, to find out why and the fact they don't have the high speed, certainly worth the phone calls.
Thank you, sir. If you could stay up here for your last thoughts here. Each candidate now will be given the opportunity to make a closing statement. Each candidate will have 30 seconds. We'll begin in a minute.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out and spending time with us candidates on the run here. I want to thank the St. Clairsville Area Chamber of Commerce, OUV, Shannon Hall here for having us. The rest of the Richland Township candidates, you've got four very qualified men for the one position that is available. And one thing I want, I want to interject to everyone, that Cracker Plant is coming. So that's just a windfall that we've not seen yet. Again, it's going to spill into St. Clairsville area. So I just think that everybody should, I guess, be aware of what's coming and the amount of people that are going to be here building this facility. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Final thoughts, 30 seconds.
I agree with Todd. I think this is good for the Chamber of Commerce to have this and I'm glad you have it. And I think we need more of them. Obviously, they're not well attended, but that's the way things go. Sometimes you have to try things out. And the other thing, there's a fellow here right now, Don Creel down here. He's got an idea about putting the prisoners out on the road from the county jail and letting them pay off their debt to the county as working for the county under the auspices of the sheriff. And I think it's a good idea. I know it's been advanced to a couple of the judges in Belmont County and I think they're supportive too. The other thing, thanks for inviting me. I appreciate being here and hope to see you along the campaign trail. Thank you.
That concludes our portion of the program for the Richland Township trustee. How about another big round for the listening audience? You guys could be excused.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to welcome the candidates to the office of St. Clairsville City Council at large. Welcome, everyone. Please have a seat. There are five candidates running for three positions. Four of the candidates are with us tonight. Perry Jones. That's Perry. Linda Jordan. Mark Poindexter. And Michael Smith. Unfortunately, Beth Ann Oakriss is not able to be here tonight due to another obligation. We will begin tonight by giving each candidate two minutes to inform the audience about themselves and why they are running for office. Speaking first tonight, and we're going in alphabetical order to start, is Perry Jones.
Good afternoon, all. Glad that you're all here. My name is Perry Jones and I was raised in St. Clairsville. I've lived in St. Clairsville every year of my life. I attended St. Clairsville High School and graduated from St. Clairsville High School. I graduated from Ohio University. And I became a driver education teacher in just two weeks after graduating from Ohio University. And in the fall, September, I became a full-time teacher at St. Clairsville. So I've had all those years there. I graduated from, with my master's degree, from the University of Dayton. I taught over 3,400 students for history and over 800 students for driver education. I was a football coach for 18 years at St. Clairsville. I was a member, I am a member of the Cumberland Fire Department. I'm also serving as a member of St. Clairsville City Rec Board. And I went to become a member of St. Clairsville Council because I wanted to be put back and do things back for the city. That's what I want to do. I love the city of St. Clairsville and I want to thank you all for being here and being attendance. That's what I want to do, is do what's best for St. Clairsville, period.
We now invite Linda Jordan to the podium. The clock will start when we begin.
Good afternoon. My husband Wayne and I have been married 46 years. We are both lifelong St. C residents. We are also St. C High School alumni. He's class of 73, I'm class of 74. Our children are Heather Jordan Jones, Heath Jordan, Alicia Jordan Freeman, and Charlie Jordan Penson. We attend Harvard Hope Church. I've been actively involved in the community for most of my life, starting as a teenager singing at area churches, concerts, variety shows, et cetera. I was a member of the St. Clairsville Area Chamber of Commerce. I served on the 2015 City Charter Review Committee. From 2010 to 2015, I served as a city civil service commissioner. I'm a former St. C Parks and Recreation Board member, as well as a former Memorial Park Board member. I served on the 2018 Belmont County American Heart Association Heartfall Fashion Show Committee, as well as the 2018, and currently serving on the 2019 A Special Wish Lip Sync Challenge Committee, which is actually this Saturday in case you didn't know. I'm a member of the Belmont County Bible Reading Task Force, which is the group responsible for the Bible reading marathon that takes place annually in front of the courthouse, leading into the National Day of Prayer, which is held every first Thursday in May. During my term as council at large, I've been serving as the city's liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board, as well as the Memorial Park Board. I regularly attend both boards' meetings and serve as a volunteer at their events.
Thank you very much. We now invite Mark Poindexter to the podium. Mark, you have two minutes.
I guess first of all, I'd like to thank the university, the Chamber of Commerce folks for putting this all together. We've been to several of these, my lovely Rebecca and myself, since we've been back to St. Clairsville. Grew up here, graduated from St. Clairsville High School. My Rebecca just had her class reunion last weekend, class of 79, and it's a wonderful, wonderful city. We've got a pretty good crowd here tonight and I should be proud. I think local politics and local things that are going on in your hometown are important. I think legacy is important. Where we're going, how we're going to get there, and how we leave things. My father passed away about five years ago, was the reason why Rebecca and I came up here to help the family out from Carolina's. Sitting in a restaurant, a guy looks over at me, used to be a basketball coach over in St. Clairsville. He says, "Hey, you're Mark Poindexter." I said, "Yes." He says, "I'm sorry to hear about your father. He was a great man, he was always there to help people out. I brought so many projects over to your house." He'd put around on them and try to fix them and help me rewire things. And I just couldn't have been more proud of my father's legacy. We've run into tons of students of my mother's who used to teach next door and we get the same kind of feedback from folks and it's just wonderful. St. Clairsville is a small town, but we've got some big issues that we really kind of need to wrap our hands around. There's some fine people that served with the city council at large, some 2,000 or more folks in the past, current and future. We've got terrific people in the city building. It would be my hope that maybe I can bring a little bit of a calming influence and maybe more of a scientific numbers and perspective to where we're going and how we're going to get there. I'm not talking about holding hands and singing kumbaya during the "I'm Okay, You're Okay" kind of book, but we need to get together. I mean, it's a simple, simple deal. You've got the sharps on one side, the jets on the other, and we need to have a calming force. We need to get together, work towards common goals that are important to this city. I think I can help with that.
You have to finish that, Mr. Poindexter. Last thought.
Thank you for your time.
We now invite Michael Smith to the podium. Mr. Smith will start when you begin.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Michael Smith. My wife is Cheryl, son Joey, attended a high estate. I'm a RISI from Wheeling. As a lot of people here are, I see, small world, everybody seems to gravitate over here. It's a great place to live. I've been here for 30 years. Attended West Attended West Liberty University, have a D S in Business Administration. Attended Duquesne University in Pittsburgh with a degree in Advanced Studies in Accounting. Won my CPA license in Ohio and West Virginia and currently working on my Pennsylvania license. Member of Rotary Club, Ohio Valley Christian Soldiers, attended St. Mary's Church here in St. Clairsville. And it's a great place to live and I appreciate everybody having us here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, we will rotate speaking orders, so we would like to begin this next round with Linda Jordan. We're headed, we're going in alphabetical order moving around. Each candidate will now be given 30 seconds to inform the audience about two or three of their top priorities on their agenda.
As you can probably tell, I am very community oriented and I am very strongly about community involvement. If reelected, I would like to spearhead a committee that would be on the order of the old Welcome Wagon Committee. Some of you may be familiar with the Welcome Wagon. It was a group of volunteers who would collect donations from businesses and private citizens as well, and make baskets and present them to newcomers to the city. And I, I just think that that would be something that would really work for our city and bring back that warm, fuzzy, small-town feeling even though we are going to grow and prosper.
Thank you, Jordan. We now invite Mr. Poindexter back up to the podium. I'm going to keep an eye on you this round. Please do. All right, 30 seconds.
And I'm, what's the question or subject?
Uh, two or three of your top priorities on your agenda. 30 seconds.
Um, I think that'll be easy enough. I'd like to see some systems, some implementation of systems in city council and in the city building. First of all, kind of talk a little bit about conflict resolution, maybe we can get a hold of a professional agency to come in and kind of help us work through our concerns. We have meetings, there's all kinds of meetings that we have, from utility, finance, planning, police committee, things of that nature, but we never have a report. I've been to, we, my Rebecca and I have been to every meeting for years and we don't seem to get reports, so I'd like to see a, something happen with that's one.
Thank you, sir. Michael Smith?
Okay. Two of the things I would like to see, see us do, towards, we just, we legislate, we don't run the city, but as council, I'd like to see us have more for outside services that the city has to contract with, have somebody local. And another issue, maybe have a shorter timeframe for businesses that want to operate in the city from start to finish. I spoke to, well, actually it's, they called me and just talking, it just takes too long from start to finish to get approval to get something done in the city, you know, to operate a business.
Thank you, sir.
My number one priority is to keep improving safety of children and adults. That's number one. Number two, I want to see water and sewage kept up and improved. And, sorry, but I've got a couple more, but it's okay. And I'd like to see the electric and the streets kept being improved in this time. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Once again, in our rotation, we now would like to ask Mr. Poindexter to come up first. Each candidate will now be asked a series of questions that come from the audience. We'd like you to keep your response to 30 seconds and then you'll hear the, the nod. If elected to council, do you feel it is your responsibility to listen to all of the residents within the city or primarily those that reside within the ward which you represent?
Thank you, good question. If I understand the at-large election candidacy process, you kind of encompass all of St. Clairsville, so if you run into a fellow that's in Ward One or a lady in Ward Four, you know, you should have your ears open, you should maybe take some notes and try and help point them in the right direction and follow up. So to answer that question, I believe I'm here for everybody in the city limits, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith? Same question. If elected to council, do you feel it is your responsibility to listen to all of the residents within the city or primarily, primarily those within your ward?
Well, council at large definitely listens to everybody in the city and I do believe even, uh, council for the particular wards should also listen to, to everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Jones? Same question.
Well, it's not hard to decide. If you're a council at large, then you should be listening to everybody in St. Clairsville, not just part, but everybody. That's why you are trying to be elected and we hope that also to get in, but everybody should be listened to for everybody.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Jordan? Absolutely everyone in the city because that is what council at large is. However, I would let their ward councilmen know that they did contact me and that we did know that.
For our next question, we would like Mr. Smith to lead it off. As a council per person, how involved in other activities within the cities would you become? As example, events at the rec center, amphitheater, or Chamber of Commerce events?
The question is how, how active I would want to be?
Yeah, how involved would you be in other activities within the city?
Well, I'm involved in a lot of organizations now. I don't want to spread myself too thin, but if I was asked to participate in something else for the city, I would certainly do it, no matter, no matter what area it was.
Thank you. Mr. Jones? Same question. How active would you be with other activities in a city?
I'd be as active as possible, since I no longer have a job and I'm just retired a few years ago, but that's why I'd like to have, be a part of the city and working with the city, so that I can be as much and be as able to help the city as possible with whatever I can do.
Thank you.
Actually, I really don't know what to say to that because I am pretty involved right now, but I guess I'd be willing to take on something else, I don't know, and let something else go, I don't know. I would, I would definitely be involved, that's for sure.
Good, thank you. And Mr. Poindexter?
Well, those of you that know me know that I'm a homework guy, a project guy, and I like to push it to the limit, so. I'm an elder at our church, we're always cooking or doing some sort of function there and, and I've done lots of things at the nursing home through the years to kind of help the older folks out and we really just like the state vision, so if there's a community event or something that we can assist with, be more than happy to be there and put us into it.
Thank you, sir. We will begin, our next question will be led off by Mr. Jones. As a member of city council, when discussing and preparing for a vote on a sensitive matter like the city's water system, what do you feel is a reasonable timeline to obtain facts, field questions from residents, discuss, and then put the matter to a vote?
Well, you'd want to hear as many as, as much as you can from the people of St. Clairsville, as often as you can, but at the same time, depending upon how bad the situation is, you need to get it fixed as bad, as quick as possible. You don't want to wait for years to try to get the dang-on thing fixed, you know, it's going to cost a lot of extra money just to be waiting for it, to hear other people talk to you about it. Some people won't talk for months and years until they, you feel like you've made your decision.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Jordan? As a member of city council, when discussing and preparing for a sensitive vote on a matter like the city's water system, what do you feel is a reasonable timeline to obtain facts, field questions, discuss, and then finally vote on the matter?
Well, it actually depends on the person. However, I feel that it, at, at least a year, excuse me, to obtain the facts and figures. You have got to be aware of the facts and figures in order to make a decision as such.
Thank you. Mr. Poindexter?
If I understand the question correctly, I think you, you take as much time that it needs. I think you take time, put information together in a logical order, you compare and contrast that information, whether it's going private, going with private company, or getting bids to correct it ourselves, or have some folks correct it in lieu of us finding loans and things of that nature. There are four basic functions of management. We plan, we lead, we organize, and we control, and you can't do that when you only have half of the information. So as long as it takes.
Would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
Uh, as a member of council, when discussing and preparing for a vote on a sensitive matter like the city's water system, what is a reasonable timeline to obtain facts, field questions, discuss, and finally vote on the matter?
Well, I think reasonable, I think as long as it takes. You know, as council, we can only, we receive information to make decisions. We really don't go out and do our own work on it, but sometimes we do, so I would, I would say as long as it takes, definitely.
Okay, thank you, sir. And for our next question, Ms. Jordan will lead us off. If elected to council, what is your position on annexation of commercial property east of the city in an effort to boost city revenues, and what obstacles do you foresee in attempting to annex outside of the existing city limits?
I am pro-annexation and as far as the, the problems that may exist currently, it would probably be getting the water. I mean, at this point, but in the future, I don't think there's a problem, but I'm for annexation.
Thank you. And Mr. Poindexter?
I agree, I'm, I'm for smart growth. If it makes sense for the city to grow the city, grow the population, grow the tax base and keep us moving in a positive direction as a city, I'm all for it.
Thank you. And Ms. Jordan?
It sounds like a two-part question, what is the annexation and?
What is your position on annexation of commercial property east of the city in an effort to boost city revenues, and what obstacles do you foresee in attempting to annex outside of the existing city limits?
Well, I'm really not for annexation unless it's an emergency situation. I don't think we should be taking, as a government, somebody else's property unless it's an emergency. As far as the, to boost revenues for the city, I don't think that should be a way to raise revenues, just like having speed traps. It's mostly a return to breaking the law, not to raise revenue, which we're not known for that. And the third part, as far as the obstacles, I'm not really familiar with what's going on behind the scenes with that. You know, I'm not an attorney, but I would certainly listen to that situation and the information.
Thank you. And Mr. Jones?
Would you mind reading the back of the agenda?
Sure. What is your position on annexation of commercial property east of the city in an effort to boost city revenues, and what obstacles do you foresee in attempting to annex outside of the city limits?
Well, I agree with at least two of these other folks, that we ought to have the opportunity to expand St. Clairsville as much as we can. It would be a lot of additional income for everybody and I just don't think east would be the right property. We could go north, south, and west also. I think it would be a good thing and I don't see why we, we wouldn't want to do it.
Thank you. And back to Mr. Poindexter, lead us off. If elected to council, what is your position toward the privatization of water? Or to keep it within the city government?
Thank you. Please keep in mind, we've attended all of the meetings, whether they were small board meetings that were put together with a handful of individuals to, to review the bid of Aqua Ohio, Aqua America, and all the city council meetings. And we've really heard lots of professional commentators and lots of professionals talk about this. The one thing that I just can't seem to get past is we have one bid to purchase our system and zero, anything else to compare it to. Coming from a business background, this is almost unbelievable. If someone sent me a proposal with one bid and nothing to compare it to, I'm not sure that individual would be a long-term employee with, with our little corporation, so. I, I really think there's a lot of homework that we should be doing, whether we form it out or hire some other individuals or consultants or engineers or the, the R cap folks, have a variety of things that they could offer us for no money. I think we ought to do some more homework, folks.
Put your opinion on the privatization of the city water?
Well, I think privatization should be, it, it's an option just like any other option, but as, as he just said, that's the only option at this point. I think we need to, this is the city, to explore getting a loan, finance it ourselves, but we, we, we don't have any plan for that, there's just no plan for anything. So right now, we're just, like, we're heading down that road to Aqua. But we, we should, we should definitely look into other options.
Yeah. And Mr. Jones?
Well, it's, it's be unfortunate, no matter who, would take over the water for St. Clairsville. But at this point, we have been waiting, and I've known, I'm sure very few of you know this, but since 77, the state of Ohio has asked St. Clairsville to take care of this water situation, and they haven't done it, haven't done it, but I hope that we're able to do it, but I think we, I, since I'm non-mon council, I don't have the information that some of the other folks should have. I, I would hope that we'd be able to take care of it one way or another. What would be best? I don't know, but if it's the company that takes over the water situation, whatever one it is, whichever. But if it's the company that takes over the water situation, whatever one it is, whichever would be best, would be best.
Thank you. And Ms. Jordan?
Based on the facts and figures over the past three years or more, if I were to have to base it on those, I would have to say privatize now. However, I have not gone through the contract, so there may be something in there that tells me, oh, no, no, this is not a good deal. So I can't really answer that, that's certain.
Okay, thank you very much. Now it's time for our closing statements. We'll start with Mr. Smith. 30 seconds.
Yeah, I appreciate the Chamber having us here, and I appreciate, I just want to say I appreciate feedback from the St. Clairsville residents regarding the recent issues, especially the water. Like everyone else, I chose to live in this city, it's a nice place to live. And my hope is for the city administration and council to listen and communicate better with its citizens, especially something like this. We need to be more civil towards each other and come together and get things done.
Thank you. And Mr. Jones?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the St. Clairsville Area Chamber of Commerce for the event that's happening today, and is very good. Also, I'd like to thank Ohio University for allowing this event to happen here. It's a beautiful campus. And the members of the community who are here, thank you all. And again, I promise to support the needs of the residents and St. Clairsville city itself.
Thank you.
I too would like to thank the Chamber and Wendy and everybody who came out. I think it's great to come out and do this. I'm amazed at those of you who did take the time to do that. I did not get an opportunity to say why I was running earlier, because I thought I'd run out of time. But I did want to say, in order for a city to function effectively, a mayor needs council people he can trust, depend on, and who are willing to work with him, or at least try to work with him, whether or not they agree. Contrary to what you may have seen on social media or heard, Mayor Pugh and I have not always seen eye to eye. A perfect example is an ordinance that he proposed. I was the first to speak up and vote no against the mayor. I'm just saying that any of the candidates who are, who are chosen, I am able to work with them whether I agree or not. I will not try at every turn to dispute, disprove, and discredit them. I will continue trying to work with them in order to do what's in the best interest of our city.
Thank you, 30 seconds, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, folks, it's a simple deal. As we put information together to go to the future, we gather data, we decide what our strengths and problem areas are, we create some objectives, which also means, let's take a look at a second opportunity and compare and contrast numbers. We take a look at those tactics, we look at budget, we talk about execution, we evaluate our plan, and we pull the trigger. Simple stuff, guys, this is not complicated. First day in office, I'm going to ask our mayor if we'll have a little conflict resolution class. Let's all get together, let's just talk, let's clear the air, let's put common goals, we all want to take Clairsville. Something that I think I'd like to institute if I get there, very simply, tell us how we're doing. Put up a little post or a little news feed on Facebook and give us your feedback from day to day, week to week. If there's anything we can do differently or better, things that might help the city run better. It may just be a bunch of interesting stuff that we get on, I don't think it hurts, let's get some professional feedback. We're missing a lot of dignity and respect in that city building. People are talked down to, people are denigrated, people are marginalized because of their education or their background, or where they live, or what neighborhood. That needs to stop. That's absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Poindexter.